For all the meetings in order, I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 12th, 2022 regular scheduled Port Clinton Council meeting in the Linda Hart Club chambers. Please stand at the Pledge of Allegiance, Lord Fair and all of the Senate who do serve me and protecting our country.
The allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For our time, that will be thy name, if I can recall, that will be that, on earth that is now given us, sustain our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and we that have offended you, but that will go us through them, for that sake, in the power of our Lord forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Um. Kelly Gangel, here. Richard Morgan.
Here.
Pat Hovis.
Here.
Beth Gilman.
Here.
Roseanne Hickman.
Present.
Margaret Phillips.
Here.
Jerry Trolle.
Present.
Thank you. The council, you previously received the June 28, 2022 regular meeting minutes. So most present persons, the President and the members of the June 28 minutes. Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a second. Thank you, Ms. Hickman. I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Hickman, to approve the June 28, 2022 regular meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side. Motion here. The chair notes and certifications have been made regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. We have no guest presentation, no public comments. We'll move on to your office reports. Council, tonight, you have some new ordinance, as well as a resolution, resolutions, ordinance Administration has asked that it be passed on its first reading as it's time-sensitive, and I believe Mr. Colston or Mr. Beal can talk about that when we get to the reading of that. Resolution 22-6 can go up to full three readings. Ordinance 23-22 will be assigned to Finance Committee and Mr. Beal and Administration have asked that it be passed on its second reading. Ordinance 24-22 will be assigned to Safety Services and will go up to full three readings. I'm not, I'm, no council's aware, but Mayor Brown has passed away and Mr. Sager sent us the visitation and everything, so. He was mayor for how long? Family, teacher, so. And then happy belated birthday to Mrs. Ossinger. And that's all I have. We'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I hope everyone enjoyed the Fourth of July, had an opportunity to participate in the 5K hosted by the Port Clinton Women's Club, the Firecracker Cutie Contest, the Food Trucks, Ice Cream Social, the Car Shows, the Amazing Voices of Freedom Concert, the Family Dance Party, the Duck Derby hosted by the United Way, and then, of course, the fireworks. Plans are already underway for next year's events, and this year's festivities are testimonial to not only the volunteers, but the supporters and the community. She doesn't know it yet, but Ms. Phillips has volunteered to shave her head if someone will protect her for $10,000.
Yes!
I thank you for doing that.
How much will I make?
No, it gets exploded.
No, I want money. That's gonna get us a lot of money.
The council and members of the committee, I hope you've all had the opportunity to watch and listen to the "Port Clinton's Calling Me" video, a new slogan for the city. I want to thank Ron Miller for writing that song. Ron has a long history of writing songs that are, have been heard on the radio, television, movies. It's a little thing that he tries to keep a secret, but it's no longer a secret. It was recorded down in Nashville by one of the premier studios down in the Nashville area and sung by a very famous artist. Seriously, I cannot tell you his name because we would have to pay him. That's the truth. The agreement is he remains anonymous, but you would recognize the individual if I told you the name. The video was produced by Shot by Shay, who's a marblehead fella. I would just ask that you all, if you haven't already, go to YouTube, share it on all your social media, like it, share it again on your social media, like it again, and again, share it on your social media. The goal here is to build a network of individuals. Let me back up even farther. The purpose of this music video and song are to help drive revenue back to the city of Port Clinton. There's no doubt that what's happened in the greater Port Clinton area, we'll throw the 43452 over the past couple of years with the infrastructure of tourism, is overwhelming with the stuff happening on Route 53 in Portage Township and Catawba with the beach, the wetlands, the White House, the walkway, the art garage, the activity in downtown. And we've realized that there's really no mechanism to focus attention on all of those items. Yes, the Visitors Bureau promotes the greater Lake Erie Shores and Islands area, but there's a lot of attractions specific to the 43452. The hope is that revenue generated through views on YouTube as well as the merchandise that will be coming within the next couple of months. If you watch the very end of the program, when Rachel Fall looks at her phone and "Port Clinton is Calling Me," the logo of Port Clinton on the cellphone will be the trademark logo for that whole campaign. So right now, we're trying to build the energy and enthusiasm for that, and I want to thank everybody involved for making that happen. It's averaging about 1,000 views per day since it was announced on July 4th, and that's without any major media picking it up. We've had a few inquiries, but thus far, nothing has been run in the regional, Midwest regional media. Moving on, council, you are aware that the railroad came into town with a piece of heavy equipment to do some work. The intent was to access the railroad from West Second Street near Harrison. They unloaded the apparatus, which was 84,000 pounds, loaded it back up and got it out of town, but there was some damage caused in that intersection of Second and Harrison. Mr. Colston's been working with not only the railroad, but the contracted third party to make the necessary repairs. Mr. Colston has some images of the damage, if you'd like to take a look at those. Moving on to another intersection in town, Perry and Monroe. As we all know, that crazy intersection has gotten crazier and crazier as usage patterns change, more and more people are coming to the area, the art garage has added traffic, development in that corner is building up. We've received a grant from the Ottawa County Revolving Loan Fund, and tomorrow morning, Mr. Colston and I will be having a conference call with Pogomire Design Group and another firm that they're affiliated with to conduct a traffic study. The hope is that traffic study, excuse me, traffic and pedestrian study, the hope is that study will take place next weekend, July 22nd weekend, with information coming on down the road on what can be done to improve the flow and safety of that intersection. Intersections seem to be the theme tonight. Third and Fulton, if anybody's gone through that intersection, you'll notice that the traffic light is turned off and one of them is heavily damaged. A garbage truck accidentally hit one of the traffic signals and put it out of commission, so that'll be a four-way stop until further notice. Again, Mr. Colston is working with the folks at Republic and their insurance company to get that repaired, already have quotes. I'm not really sure how long that's going to be down, but again, maintain as a four-way stop. We've had quite a bit of conversation with a wide range of folks, including the charter fishermen that go out onto the lake and the OSU Sea Grant over at Gibraltar Island with regards to mayflies. I've learned a lot more about mayflies in the past couple of days, but the bottom line is the folks at Sea Grant believe that based on water temperature, the swarms in this area are done for the most part. Yay! We may have a couple more. As the water temperature to the east of us gets to that critical temperature, if we get a northeast wind, we may get the edge of some swarms, but again, they believe that we're good to go here in Port Clinton, so we've contacted First Energy and LD in the process of turning back the street, turning on the streetlights again throughout our community. I believe that's going to start early next week. One of the common questions is that we've been getting about the walkway is when's the dock going back in? With the elevation of the new walkway, the gangplank leading out to the floating docks needed to be adjusted. That's been picked up today. We anticipate that a week, 10 days, maybe 14 days, that gangplank will go back in, the floating docks will go back in, and the intent is to keep those going through the month of October. Moving over to our wastewater treatment plant, there are two activities going on. You may recall earlier this spring, you authorized the purchase of some screens that had been damaged over the years. Those are being installed, as well as an electrical issue that occurred a couple weeks ago. That's also in the process of being repaired. Excuse me, Trace, I forgot that. Do you mind? Thanks. I've got to go get something here, I'm sorry. Chief Scott and I had the opportunity to attend the National Matches First Shot Ceremony earlier today. It was pretty impressive. As they were introducing people in the crowd, the gentleman literally right in front of me was a two-time Olympic gold medalist, congressman from the state of Nevada, really, really sharp guy. Had an opportunity to speak with him. He has a competition and a trophy named after him at the National Matches. They anticipate over 8,700 competitors over the next five weeks for the National Rifle Matches, competing in 40 different events. And one of the things I found overwhelmingly amazing in this whole process, as Major General John Harris, who is the Adjutant General of the Ohio National Guard, was giving his remarks, he looked right at me, addressed me as Mayor Snyder, and thanked me, and I want to thank you all for all the improvements to the city of Port Clinton that he's witnessed over the past couple of years. And along those same lines, Judith Legursky, who is the Chairman of the Board for the Civilian Marchmanship Program, she's from Montana, but visits Port Clinton quite a bit, echoed the Major General's remarks during her comments. So I think that's a testament, people are noticing what we're doing together to make Port Clinton a better place, and these are two prominent individuals that just, it took me back. As we move on with conversation here, ordinance 24-22 is on the agenda tonight. I want to thank our Blight Committee, of course, Mrs. Shanker, Chief Scott, Chief Johnson, Chief Kent here, Chief Johnson, Todd Bickley and Tracy Colston for what they've done to get us to this point. Again, this is not the end of this blight discussion, it's just sharpening the arrows we have in our quiver to address some of the issues of living room lawns and junk on the boulevards. One of the questions, I'm often moving topics here, going on to the forward-looking infrastructure project, one of the questions we're all getting is, when's this project going to start? When's this project going to start? For those of you that were in attendance last year on October 14th at the Performing Arts Center, I had indicated that the timeline we were presenting at that time said that the first shovel would be in the ground the week of September 11th. I'm going to have to fall on the sword. That's not going to happen. For a variety of reasons, primarily the amount of infrastructure projects happening not only regionally but nationally, the funding sources that we have found, and our ability to adjust the initial plans, and the fact that the plans need to be reviewed by our funding sources, primarily USDA and Ohio Department of Transportation, everything is the perfect storm. It's going to be delayed a little bit. We're hoping to have the bids, I don't want to say, let me rephrase that. It will happen. The bids will go out later September, first part of October, shovels in the ground first quarter of 2023. That has been a promise that Pogomire has committed to me. So in a way, it's a good thing that we've been able to find some money. There's all these other projects going around, around the region and nation to improve the infrastructure. It's going to happen. We've got the resources in place. It's just a matter of everything and all the paperwork catching up with it. Two final things. Today, July 12th, happens to be my parents' 53rd wedding anniversary, so I want to, for the record, congratulate Mom and Dad on their wedding anniversary. And finally, and Mrs. Sardi referred to this, last Friday was a very special day in the city of Port Clinton. It was Mrs. Ostermer's birthday. With that, I'd like everybody to join me in happy birthday as Mr. Colston presents a cake.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Have everybody singing.
Happy birthday to you, Sandy. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you all.
Yay!
It's a beautiful evening. We will partake after.
Yeah, I don't know if council wants to take an immediate break, but this fact, I would sure love that. But with that, that concludes my report for this evening. Anyone have any questions?
Does council, anyone in the council have a question for the mayor?
Before you ask, it's half chocolate, half vanilla.
Important questions. Buttercream or what?
With.
Move on to the other group.
What if for buttercream, we take a break?
So, no.
Thank you, Madam President. I brought no snacks. Counsel, this morning, you received an email, or you received via email, a summary memo to accompany and explain ordinance 22-22. I also handed out a paper copy with the corrected date originally had June 12th, considered to like, well, my apologies, but I made the correction. So that explains the Portage Park Playground project finances in some greater detail, and then the need to approve the playground equipment purchase itself, which is above the $50,000 threshold, which council administration usually recognize, and to approve the park district grant award contract itself. So the project will be able to be fully funded from general fund offsets or pay force, which I identified in ordinance 23, the next one up, and its summary memo, and hopefully the city will see the $15,000 reimbursement grant come in this fiscal year, be able to break around and complete the project by the end of October. So I heard you passed ordinance 22 this evening. Are there any questions on that item? Seeing none. Council, you also received this evening a summary memo to accompany and explain the ordinance 23, which provides supplemental appropriations to meet the city's financial obligations this year. Includes that $52,000 in pay force for the Portage Park project, supplemental appropriations to cover expenses for the senior center, cemetery department, and law director. It also appropriate amounts that the city has seen or will see very shortly, new revenue stream for payments, including fire department equipment sales, bonus EMS payments we receive at the city, and grants equal to approximately $100,000. There's also the additional ARBA funds that should be in this week or next, and additional grant funds for the previous Justice Press Project, which is solely passed. So we have to answer any questions about that, either here or in committee, ones picked up by the past week. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Beal.
Yes, ma'am.
I've told you before, I appreciate when you do all this written-out stuff because it makes it so much easier to suffer. Some of us want the confidence and such to.
Well, I'm not here, so it helps me. Thank you.
And also, council this evening, Mr. Beal passed a financial report for June 30, 2022, and we'll get to correspondence, council. So if you choose this, someone would like to make a motion to add, include that.
Great. So on that last item that I passed out, I would describe the condition of the general fund as healthy. Income tax collection is promising, which, as we have, drives general fund revenue. I would describe water fund as on the watch list, due to higher expenditures than originally anticipated, I'm sure it'll be okay. Superfund is healthy. Fire levy fund is also on that watch list with the supplemental appropriations in ordinance 23, and I see since June 30th, there've already been some additional bonus EMS payments committed for services rendered there, so I'm sure that will be fine again. Oh, and the upcoming EMS contract withdrawal on the council's agenda, I'm sure will provide that extra cushion for the higher-than-typical expenditures for the fire department. Infrastructure fund continued to do very, very well, and the final ARBA payment should be of the amount $324,763, and that should be this week. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Treasurers' Report.
Yes, through July 12th, 2000, or 2022, we have collected in bed tax $88,035.41, and our dock tax collections are $19,925.
Do you have any questions for the treasurer? Law Director.
Thank you, Madam President. So the blight issue, as the mayor indicated, is we're just starting on it. We do have the first ordinance, which is addressing basically what's on the boulevard, at the curb, in the alleyway, right outside some of the property, so we're looking more so at public property. And then we're going to move towards private property, look towards littering on private property and other items. So hopefully, this is just the beginning, and we can move forward to addressing all of the blight. Ms. Phillips, there is a certain tent that has come down, so I don't know if you saw it for yourself, but the tent is down. Nothing additional, Madam President. Thank you.
It's only been there, what, three years? One.
Yes. Thank you. Counsel, have any questions? The law director? Okay. Move on to superparities. Mr. Colston.
Just real quick, as I update you, always on the H2O program, there's been no movement at all. They've had one person they acquired about it, and they own another house, so they were not able to get into the program, and that's really the only things going on with that, so it's pretty much status quo. I wanted to just let you guys know that July 22nd, we're going to be cooking for the seniors at the senior center. They are providing the food, and I think we're just providing the grill and cooking. And then the big picnic that we always have, which we haven't had because of COVID, is August 5th. 12 o'clock will be lunch served at City Park. If it is raining, we will end up going to 33 Park Drive. We have a backup plan in case. And that's all I have tonight, Madam President, unless there's some questions.
Those are two senior resources.
Two senior resources, yes.
Any questions for?
Two Fridays, those are.
Any questions from Mr. Colston?
And now, if you heard, we were talking, those are both coordinated through senior resources for senior citizens in the area.
Both at noon?
Both at noon.
Yeah, I think the one at the senior center, they'll probably feed them a little bit early, they get a little restless over there, but the other one will be noon, yes.
That comment was made by Tracy Colston. 41.
That's all right, they know it.
Mr. Mayor or Mr. Colston, the July date was which?
23rd.
22nd.
22nd.
Thank you. 22nd. And we'll move on to committee reports. Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. We will be having a meeting next Monday, July 18th, at 6:00 PM. We will be discussing ordinances, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 23.
Thank you. Environment Public Works, Mrs. Hickman.
We're going to be meeting this evening on the.
Thank you. Safety Services, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to be meeting again two weeks from today at 5:30 to talk about lawn curbs and such. Thank you.
Thank you.
5:30 here at conference room.
Economic and Community Development, Mrs. Gilman.
Our next meeting is also in two weeks after the council meeting. Nothing else, Madam President.
Thank you. We'll move on to correspondence.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move we add the financial report from the auditor to correspondence tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a second. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I have a motion from Mrs. Gilman, seconded by Ms. Phillips, to approve the financial report from Mr. Beal under correspondence. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, the same side. Motion carries. Under correspondence, we have the Safety Services Committee meeting minutes from June 28, 2022. Environment Public Works Committee meeting minutes from June 14, 2022. The Higher Division of Lurker Control, Rite Aid of Ohio Inc., DBA Rite Aid, number 3179, 126 East Perry Street, Port Clinton, Ohio. I should have said, the county chief has no objection, so council would like to take any action on that this evening. They may. Then we also have the financial report from the auditor for June 30, 2022. Does council wish to take any action as to correspondence?
Madam President? I move we waive our right to contest of, of the Lurker Control application.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. Any discussion? Will the court please call a roll? Pat Hovis, yeah. Kelly Gangel.
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman.
Yes.
Beth Gilman.
Yes.
Margaret Phillips.
Yes.
Jerry Trolle. Richard Morgan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 7-0. Does council wish to take any further action as to the correspondence this evening?
Madam President, I move we accept the correspondence.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, submitted by Mrs. Hickman, to accept the correspondence as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same side. Thank you, motion carries. We'll move on to reviews of ordinance and resolutions. We have those for a reading. We'll move on to second acts. Will the court please read by Title and Summary, ordinance 17-22.
Ordinance number 17-22, an ordinance retaining the home rule authority to retain all municipal ordinances that regulate and/or prohibit possession, discharge, ignition, and/or exploding of fireworks, and to retain all ordinances that regulate noise, disturbance of the peace, and disorderly contact by opting out of amended substitute House Bill 172 and reaffirming the existing ban on possession, sale, or discharge of fireworks as set forth in Chapter 1519 of the City of Port Clinton codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 17-22? Seeing none, ordinance 17-22 will be moved to its third reading on July 26th, 2022. Will the court please read by Title and Summary only, ordinance 18-22?
Ordinance number 18-22, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a contract with the Board of Trustees of Bay Township for the city to provide emergency ambulance services within Bay Township and declaring an emergency.
Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 18-22? Seeing none, ordinance 18-22 will move to its third reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting on July 26, 2022. Will the court please read by Title and Summary only, ordinance 19-22?
Ordinance number 19-22, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a contract with the Board of Trustees of Catawba Island Township for the city to provide emergency ambulance services within Catawba Island Township and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 19-22? Seeing none, ordinance 19-22 will move to its third reading at the regular scheduled council meeting on July 26, 2022. Will the court please read by Title and Summary only, ordinance 20-22?
Ordinance number 20-22, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a contract with the Board of Trustees of Portage Township for the city to provide emergency ambulance services within Portage Township and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 20-22? Seeing none, ordinance 20-22 will move to its third reading at the regular scheduled council meeting on July 26, 2022. Will the court please read by Title and Summary only, ordinance 21-22?
Ordinance number 21-22, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a contract to furnish fire protection to the township of Portage, Ottawa County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 21-22? Seeing none, ordinance 21-22 will move to its third reading at the regular scheduled council meeting on July 26, 2022. We'll move on to first readings. Will the court please read by Title and Summary only, ordinance 22-22?
Ordinance number 22-22, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into an agreement to purchase playground equipment for Portage Park and authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to execute a grantee award contract with the Park District of Ottawa County and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to Ordinance 22-22 this evening?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Trolle.
I would like to make a motion. Will we waive the three required readings of Ordinance 22-22?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolle, seconded by Mrs. Hickman. To waive the three required readings. Will the court please call the roll?
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Pat Hovis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 7-0. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to Ordinance 22-22?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolle.
I'd like to make a motion to retain the emergency clause in Ordinance 22-22.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Trolle, seconded by Mrs. Phillips to retain the emergency clause as to Ordinance 22-22. Will the court please call the roll?
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hovis?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven, by a vote of 7-0. The emergency clause is hereby retained. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to Ordinance 22-22?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolle.
I'd like to make the motion. Will we adopt Ordinance 22-22?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. Discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Trolle, seconded by Mrs. Hickman, to adopt Ordinance 22-22. Will the court please call the roll?
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Pat Hovis?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of 7-0. Ordinance 22-22 is hereby adopted. Will the court please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 23-22?
Ordinance Number 23-22, an ordinance amending ordinance number 6-22 as amended of the City of Portland and adjusting accounts within the city of Port Clinton.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to Ordinance 23-22? Seeing that, Ordinance 23-22 will be moved to its second reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting on July 26, 2022. Will the court please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 24-22?
Ordinance Number 24-22, an ordinance preventing any person, firm, corporation, or association, regardless of intent, to leave furniture, junk, litter, and rubbish at the boulevard, curbside, or alley for more than 24 hours and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to Ordinance 24-22? Seeing that, Ordinance 24-22 will be moved to its second reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting on July 26, 2022. Will the court please read by title and summary only, Resolution 22-6?
Resolution 22-6, a resolution of the City of Port Clinton adopting federally approved Ottawa County Multi-Jurisdictional National Hazard Mitigation Plan and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to Resolution 22-6 this evening? Seeing that, Ordnance, or Resolution 22-6 will be moved to its second reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting on July 26, 2022. We move on to business from the floor. Mr. Morgan?
Nothing, except fireworks are really good. Instead of making them longer, these teams shoveling closer. Excellent. It was worth the ball you had for, I think.
Yes, it was.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. Nothing for me. Okay, thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. Last weekend was marvelous, and it was just great to see all the people out there. It was Friday, Saturday, and Sunday when it was uptown. Just delightful to see everybody out there.
Thank you. Celebrities? Nothing to back out of, but Mr. Trolle?
Madam President?
Yes?
I would like to commend Mr. Trolle with reference to Ordinance 22-22, that he was able to triply get the way retained and adopted after five years of trying. Thank you.
I think he should get a piece of cake.
Yes, the first and biggest piece of cake.
I just want to share, I've received a lot of compliments from people, and some people that have moved back to the area, who had left after high school and had purchased properties here, and are just blown away by what's been going on.